Third, 2018. If you would please stand and join me to the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk would please call the roll.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
And, Mr. Mayor, I've been informed that Janice Hoppy would be absent tonight, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Councillors, you have in your council packets, the City Council minutes for March 26, 2018, and study notes of November 2, 2018. If there are no corrections, we will show these approved as presented. There are no corrections, so the minutes will stand as presented. We have a proclamation. Ms. Duran, if you would join me on the podium. I have a proclamation tonight about Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2018, and Colorado Denim Day, April 25, 2018. Whereas every day, women, men, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault, and whereas sexual violence affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances, and whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far, far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars, and whereas during National Sex Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves not only to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, but also by raising awareness, expanding support for victims, and strengthening our response, and whereas, as a nation, we share the responsibility for protecting each other from sexual assault, supporting victims when it does occur, and bringing perpetrators to justice, and whereas, at the state level, we work to provide necessary resources to victims of every circumstance, including medical attention, mental health services, relocation and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process, and whereas Colorado communities can come together to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support victims, and heal lives. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do declare April to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and further recognize April 25, 2018, as Colorado Denim Day, encouraging Wheat Ridge citizens to wear denim to show their support for the victims of sexual assault and highlight this issue in our community. I would like to send this to you, who brought this forward.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank staff so much for putting this together, thank council and mayor for
supporting it, and also, I want to let our citizens know they should be very, very proud of their community this evening for standing up to sexual abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to our Citizens' Right to Speak portion of our agenda. This is for any item that is not an agenda item, and when I read your name, and I have a list here, if you would please come to the podium and adjust the microphone so we can hear you clearly, and give us your first name and last name, if you'd spell your last name, and provide us your address, and then you have about three minutes to speak. So, our first speaker is Dorothy Archer, and Vivian Voss is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Starker, council, staff, and citizens. Before I address my usual conversation, I would like to speak on behalf of the issue of the signage. Not to my knowledge were there any stakeholders' meetings held to make them knowledgeable of what you are doing this evening. I have several friends who have businesses here in Wheat Ridge and have not been made aware at all of this issue that is taking place tonight. I question the transparency of this action. I was wondering if Mr. Goff could at least call me on my cellphone to address the questions I posed to you last week, because you're not allowed to answer me here. I still would like to know, because I have not seen it written anywhere, and I have searched. When is the deadline for the survey? How did you arrive, and who would be receiving those? Are they registered voters, or are they homeowners? And what percentage of either was taken? Now, tonight I'd like to speak on behalf of your comprehensive plan. Last time I spoke on the housing issue, on page two, again, one more time, the verbiage: preserve and enhance Wheat Ridge neighborhoods. Preserve and enhance Wheat Ridge neighborhoods. If you take a look then, please, at page 11, again, maintaining the character of existing neighborhoods and establishing new housing options will retain and attract a large range of household types. Again, I emphasize, none of us are against a dilapidated house being raised, we are against 35 feet. How simple is it to address that situation? We're looking at 25 feet with a 15-foot bulk plane. If you deem absolutely necessary to do 27 feet, then it's a 15-foot bulk plane. Nowhere is anybody in all of these zonings, these residential zoning, in favor of a 35-foot with a flat roof, not even, not even the bulk plane. Again, I point out on 33, 10, and 20, the first houses that are to your discretion are 35 feet with a 15-foot bulk plane, monsters next to the ranch houses and the bungalows. Again, if we look at how to use the structure plan, consistent character in a predominantly single family and some high-quality multifamily that fits the neighborhood, that fits the neighborhood, please, may I emphasize that, that fits the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vivian Voss, and Roger Lesher on deck.
Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place, that's Voss with one S. I was at study session last week and listened to some words back and forth about citizens' advisory groups, and all week it was on my mind, I couldn't let it go, so here I am speaking to it tonight. I speak as a volunteer. I speak as a volunteer for Wheat Ridge Five Committees and Boards. In addition, I applied for and was appointed on the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission. I applied for DIRTT, and even though I was not appointed, I voluntarily sat in on every meeting they had. I applied for and was appointed to the Wheat Ridge Outside Agency Citizens Group, and I have voluntarily attended four times per month the Wheat Ridge Council and study sessions as much as I can. Each time I was sitting on a committee, we would all discuss, is our advisement going to be taken, or will it be thrown out by council? The outside agency asked that question amongst ourselves, I heard DIRTT ask that, and I've seen planning commission decisions denied and overturned by council. Council even negotiates amongst themselves at study sessions, and I've seen various same issues, various study sessions come back, week after week after week, and council has been ruled and overturned by the vote of the people at times. What I am saying is that life and government is all about negotiations and compromise. We negotiate everything, from IRS payments with our spouses, children, our faith, even the police we negotiate. Parents are life and death, it's all a negotiation. So I hope all volunteers realize that the action is only advisory, and no recommendation can ever be expected to hold. If the threat or fear that no one will volunteer due to a lack of acceptance after all the hard work, time, and effort, let me show you a case in point. Outside agency recommendations have been accepted by the city council without any negotiation, but as of tonight, volunteers are still needed in several districts to make the want of eight. So recommendations are accepted, yet sometimes there is no interest to volunteer, whether the recommendations have been accepted or not. In closing, I challenge all citizens to volunteer. It is your city, and you are being asked and given a chance to assist in the plans. Seems like volunteering is like voting. If you do not vote or volunteer, then can you truly speak to what is happening all around you?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roger Lesher and Bob Brazel on deck.
Good evening, I'm Roger Lesher, I reside at 4599 Carr Street. Wadsworth is only busy twice a day, that's when you're going someplace and when you're coming back. The current staff tells us that they are planning on 75,000 vehicles by 2040, and our current count is 45,000 vehicles. Yet the 1999 corridor plan said we would have 64,500 vehicles count by 2020, so with that count increased by 19,500 cars in the next year and a half, if we use the 1999 study, we could use the 1999 design. I think we're getting bad numbers from somewhere. There probably won't be any cars on the road anyway if the sidewalk and bike paths are being used, being fully utilized. Going north on Wadsworth, we get jammed up with traffic just before getting under the freeway at I-70. That's where Wheat Ridge's two lanes go into three lanes in Arvada. What happens with the three proposed lanes going into three lanes? Just a bigger parking lot, and if you're coming or going, it's going to be pretty crowded. Eighty-seven percent of traffic is going north and south, 13% is going east and west. Seventy-five thousand cars, eighty-seven percent, is 62,500. Thirteen percent is 9,750 cars going east and west. Ninety-seven hundred divided by four, because we have four lanes of 38th and 44th, that's 2,387 cars going right or left. CFI lane increases traffic flow by 30%, that's 716 cars going through the intersection in the extra lane that the CFI wants to put in. In a 12-hour day, that's only an increase of 60 vehicles. At today's rate, that would be 55 cars. How about the opportunity to make a U-turn on Wadsworth that has traffic flow of 75,000 cars? It's not going to happen. Go to 7th and Wadsworth, try to make a U-turn during rush hour and get the experience. Wadsworth Boulevard Corridor Transportation Land Use and Design Plan, City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, May 12, 1999, page 26. Financial feasibility: The finished value of the new development must be greater than the private cost for the purchase of property, site preparation, construction, and the various soft costs, including credits for any public participation. Are we still thinking 50 million cars? Denver-Wadsworth, yeah, I got 30 seconds. Denver-Wadsworth from Arvada to Lakewood, try walking it or driving it. Count the bicycles, count the people who are on the sidewalks, count how many people are utilizing with what they're on. Have you ever seen someone going down Wadsworth on a bike, taking a 47-inch TV set home? But, we do not have a Plan B at this time. Remember, it's only busy twice a day. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Brazel.
Yeah, Bob Brazel, 3830 Carr Street, B-R-A-Z-E-L-L. I think he spelled Bob, that's easy. Every time I come to a city council meeting, I see where everybody's wanting to redevelop everything into multi-use, 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 multi... What is multi-use? Can anybody explain it to me? The way you control what goes on in your city is through your zoning, and so why don't we just make the whole city multi-use, and we'd be like Texas, where you can build a Ferris wheel next to a single-family home? This multi-use is nonsense. If somebody wants to rezone their property, they need to rezone it according to what they're actually going to do, and have a plan. Instead of just going for a multi-use so you can increase the value of your property and sell it, then anybody can do whatever they want to with it. It's nonsense. The only way we control our city and control what goes on and maintain our property values is through our zoning. So multi-use is just an excuse for the people in the city and city staff not to do their jobs, and not to research and do what is necessary to preserve our city. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers that I have signed up for Citizen Comment. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we will close that Citizens' Right to Speak portion and move to our regular agenda. Council, are there any changes to be made to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the agenda as presented. Ms. Davis, will you introduce item number one, please?
Thank you. I'm introducing the Consent Agenda, so I'll read off the items under the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda Item A, Resolution 23-2018, Amending the Fiscal Year 2017 Capital Improvement Program (CIP) Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Decreased Appropriation in the Amount Item B, Resolution 24-2018, Amending the Fiscal Year 2017 Open Space Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Decreased Appropriation in the Amount of $618,413. Item C, Motion to Award a Contract to Independent Roofing Specialist Commerce City, Colorado, in the Amount of $251,706 for the City Hall Roof HVAC Repairs and Replacement, and to approve a contingency amount of $50,341 for total payment not to exceed $302,047. And, Consent Agenda Item D, Resolution 26-2018, Amending the Fiscal Year 2017 Budget to Reflect the Approval of Increased Available Beginning Fund Balances in Certain Funds.
Thank you. Before I ask for motion, are there any items on the Consent Agenda that council would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Davis, may I have a motion on the items on the Consent Agenda?
Thank you. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, and D.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Davis, a second by Mr. Pond. Is there any discussion on the Consent Agenda items? Mr. Matthews.
If staff could for us, please, I don't want to make a huge deal, I'm just a little confused where we're taking money out of some items and putting money back in in 2017, and how those numbers quite just add up. Is there a Cliff Notes version? I'm not picking it apart, but...
Sure. Councilmember Matthews, are you referring to the open space and CIP items? Is that what you need clarification on? So, in accordance with our budgetary best practices, as well as what our charter expects from us, expenditures cannot exceed revenues, and so what we're doing is what I refer to as a simple budget cleanup in terms of, when we adopted the 2017 budget, it was adopted with certain numbers where the budget was balanced, revenues and expenditures, and then when we carried items over into 2017, the expenditure line items increased, throwing off revenues and expenditures. So what we're doing is basically decreasing an expenditure line item in both the open space and the CIP budget, and we wait until the end of the year to do that in order to capture any other changes that take place during that fiscal year.
Thank you. And just for those folks that are looking at the budget, I just thought an explanation there would be helpful.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With relationship to the payments of $302,047 for the City Hall Roof and HVAC repairs, what amount to that, or how is that funded, by insurance payments, or are we being reimbursed in any way?
Yes, a good portion of that is being reimbursed by insurance. We received $267,500 for insurance for those repairs, so any overage will be, we received over a million dollars in insurance proceeds for all citywide damages from the May 8 hailstorm. All those funds aren't necessarily going to be used to fix everything, so any overage that we didn't get specifically for the repairs to the roof will be taken out of insurance proceeds that come from other damages.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, would you please introduce item number two?
Council Bill Number 08-2018, An Ordinance Amending Article 567 of the Sign Code of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Case Number ZOA-18-01. This is a public hearing, and ordinance for second reading, so do we need an ordinance number?
Yes, that's the job of the mayor to ask for that when the time is appropriate.
Mr. Mayor. The issue: In June of 2015, the United States Supreme Court decided the case of Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona. This decision, which held that the Town of Gilbert sign code was unconstitutional, has a significant impact on local government sign codes throughout the nation. In brief, signs cannot be regulated by their content, so sign codes must be modified to regulate signage utilizing time, place, and manner standards. This has prompted cities nationwide, including the City of Wheat Ridge, to evaluate their sign codes and make amendments to ensure they are constitutional. The city found it advantageous to also use this opportunity to update the code with modern standards, correct longstanding typographical errors, and clarify enforcement language, and reaffirm former policy directions on signs.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have an ordinance number for this one?
This will be ordinance number 1641.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, I would like to open the public hearing, and, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
We do. Mr. Zach Wallace, Planner for Community Development Department.
Mr. Wallace, please proceed.
For the record, Zach Wallace Mendez, Planner with the Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Tonight I am presenting Case Number ZOA-1801, An Ordinance Amending Article 7 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws, also known as the Sign Code Update. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, and this digital presentation. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore the city council does have jurisdiction to hear the case. So a quick overview of what brings us here and the process that we went to, as was noted by Councilmember Fitzgerald, in 2015, the Supreme Court unanimously decided on the case of Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, which briefly held the Town of Gilbert sign code unconstitutional because it regulated signs based on their content, which is a violation of the First Amendment. In May of 2017, so approaching one year ago, we approached council with kind of a synopsis of the Reed versus Town of Gilbert case law decision, and we were giving consensus to move forward with those updates, as well as a couple of other items that several council members brought to our attention that they'd like to see addressed. And then we did a series of back and forth, so we worked on those updates for a couple of months, brought them to you in October for a study session, then went back to Planning Commission for some further input and a little bit more planning-focused review of the Sign Code Update, then brought it back to you for another round of checks and balances, if you will, before bringing it to Planning Commission Public Hearing in March. And then, so between December and March, we have been finalizing the changes that you have directed us to make, reviewing it internally, and then working with the city attorney to make sure everything is good to go. I will quickly run through the items that we were directed to update, just very quickly. So Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, we were directed to do a scrub of our whole code, to take out anything that was content-based regulation, so we did that. For the temporary signs commercial, there was direction to limit it to one temporary sign per business at a time, but that enforcement be delayed one year from adoption of the ordinance in order to allow proper outreach to our business community. Signs carried by persons, there was direction to allow the signs carriers, signs carried by persons, along the public right-of-way, so long as they don't negatively impact vehicular, bicycle, or pedestrian safety. The electronic message centers are LED signage. We currently have no standards in our code for illumination, so when we get complaints about signs being too bright, there really isn't much for us that we can do, because we don't have any standards for that. So we were directed to add that language into the code, as well as reduce the minimum time between messages from 15 seconds to eight, which is more in line with the industry standard and also aligns us with our neighboring jurisdictions. 3D signs or iconic signage was added to the code as a new sign type. We've allowed this under the wall signage or freestanding signs, and it's allowed as a percentage of those typical ratios that are allowed. Off-premise signs, we added a requirement that the sign permit applicant also be the property owner or principal lesssee of that business or property. Business district signage, there was support from council to allow this type of signage, but that'd be regulated by an internal policy, which we will begin working on as soon as we kind of wrap up the actual code update. Yard signs for residential, there was direction not to limit the number of yard signs that there could be on a residential property, so there is no limits in the code. Freestanding signage, there was support for, it was a pole versus monument-based sign kind of discussion, and there was support to allow pole signs as they currently exist, or for businesses who just want a new sign, but for new development or total redevelopment of a site, there was direction to permit only monument signage, not pole signage, and that is except for those properties that are within a fourth of a mile of the highway. And that is except for those properties that are within a fourth of a mile of the highway. They're allowed a 50-foot tall sign, which has to be many times pole-based. Almost to the end here, non-conforming signs. There was some interest in amortizing non-conforming signs. However, the ultimate direction was to hold off on any modifications to this portion of the Sign Code at this time until we're able to gather more information about the current status of non-conforming signs across the city. And then finally, changeable copy signage. We just wanted to reaffirm the current sign regulations which prohibit changeable copy LED signage in our MUN and MUC TOD zone districts, and there was support for that. So that resulted, all of those updates and directions resulted in a content-based scrub of the entire code. Based on that content-based scrub, we had to add, modify, or delete some definitions. Some of that was based on code-based language. Some of it was because they were defining sign types that were content-based, so they just needed to be deleted. And then because we deleted so many sign types that were content-based, we had to add new sign categories to kind of capture those signs that were deleted from the code, so we had to add some definitions. We reorganized the permanent and temporary sign standards for clarity and user-friendliness, but none of the standards changed. So we didn't change the allowed height, the allowed size, the allowed setbacks. The number of signs you're allowed, with the exception of the temporary sign for commercial businesses, is now limited to one. We migrated all the enforcement and penalties code sections into one section of the code before they were just kind of scattered throughout. So we moved those together and made a few tweaks that will make it easier for code enforcement to be able to enforce the Sign Code. And then there were minor amendments to fix existing typographical errors that have been existing in the code for quite some time. So one item that I'd like to discuss is billboards. We are not touching our billboards section of the code, which is the very last section of Article 7. It is being renumbered because there is a digital section that has been added in between the beginning and the end. But we're not touching those regulations. However, I believe last week, staff met with several representatives of the billboard agency and the state lobbyists because they had some concerns. Their concern was that the removal of the off-premise sign category would expose the city to billboard-like signage along our commercial and arterial roadways where billboards are not currently permitted. So essentially, you know, you own a property on Wadsworth and you sell off a 10-by-10 square on the corner to allow someone to build a sign there, essentially is what the concern was, I believe. The proposed Sign Code ordinance, as it sits in front of you today, states that the applicant for the sign permit shall be the property owner or principal less E. So based on the concerns that we have received, we are recommending some additional added language to clarify that you can't sell off a small piece of your property in order to be sold or leased to a billboard company. So we're suggesting that we add the property owner, principal less E, or authorized agent of the platted or otherwise recognized as legally developable parcel on which the sign will be located shall be the same person applying for the sign permit. So it adds a little bit more clarity that, you know, you can't sell off a random 10-by-10 square of your property. It needs to be a recognized platted or recognized parcel of land in order to have signage. And with that update, I forgot to mention one last thing. During our review today, before this meeting, we realized that one of our new definitions, the size of sign definition, stopped short of defining the measurement for a freestanding sign. So what you have in front of you is an amended recommended motion, which includes both the language that I just discussed for the billboards as well as some additional language to add to the end of the size of sign definition to cover the freestanding signage, which is currently dismissed. So that language just briefly states that the sign area shall include the frame, but not the pole or structural support unless it's internally illuminated or otherwise designed to display some sort of wording or advertisement. Additionally, architectural features that are part of a building or part of a freestanding structure not integral to the part of the design, which is like landscaping of the building, structural forms complementing the sign should not be counted towards the sign area either. So again, that is written more clearly on your amended motion. But we would recommend approval of this update to the Sign Code with two conditions of approval. One is the modified language regarding the property owner principal less E requirements, and another condition being the added language, the size of sign definition. And then just for your information, if this is approved tonight, we still have a lot of work to do in updating the Sign Code. So we have a lot of handouts that we give folks when they come in to ask about signs that we'll have to update, update all of our online documents. And then due to the new illuminants and temporary sign regulations, we'll have to work on some sort of outreach to our local business community and through our public information officer to make sure folks are aware of those new regulations, the enforcement of which will be delayed one year per council's direction. And then graphics updates to make sure everyone is up to snuff on what each sign type actually is, since there are actually really many different names for each sign category. So that is the end of my presentation. Kind of breezed over some of that just because we've been before you many, many times to discuss the Sign Code, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, I think we will go to a public comment and then we'll come back to questions at that time. So I have some people that have signed up to speak on this. Our first speaker is R.D. Sewell, and Marcus Daniel is on deck. If you would please give us your first and last name, spell your last name, and give us an address.
Yes, sir. R.D. Seawold, with Seawold Hanfley in Public Affairs. My office is at 511 Broadway, Denver, Colorado. Good evening, mayor and members of city council. I won't say who I am now that I just gave that information for public record. For five years, I have represented the Colorado Outdoor Advertising Association, and those members include the big outdoor advertising, Lamar, Mile High, Outfront. And if I could have the members who are with us tonight to please stand. Thank you very much. For six years, I enforced the Denver zoning code, which included the Sign Code. It was probably one of the toughest things to enforce through a good economy and also a bad economy. Eighteen months ago, we participated in CDOT's State of Colorado rulemaking for the state Sign Code. Two months ago, we finished working with Jefferson County as they adopted their own Sign Code, addressing the recent Supreme Court ruling. I cite my experience, but no Wheat Ridge is a special place and definitely has its own identity. So I want to be respectful of that, having also done some work here myself. Like Jefferson County, you can pass a new Sign Code, a Sign Code that has definitions of on and off-premise. Doing so, you're not going to eliminate the freedom of speech. And I think that's where we run into some issues of the differences between freedom of speech and signage for primary use. Wheat Ridge is over 100 years old, and I don't think today they've never had a lawsuit, looking at all the old signs that are out in the hallway. Our objection is this: You shouldn't be able to monetize from an on-premise sign. On-premise signs are to promote the primary use of that particular business. It's our opinion you would be opening the door to allow businesses to sell sign space not related to their business. Examples: Wheat Ridge Cyclory. And again, this is from last week when we met, because we've been following this. And yes, we've asked to meet prior, and thank goodness Patrick Goff finally got us in the door last week. If you opened, the way it's written now, Wheat Ridge Cyclory, another business during the season like now through the end of summer would be able to come up and purchase some space from a business close to Wheat Ridge Cyclory, under the way the code is written. Not a billboard company, but the owner of that existing sign, my understanding, would be able to sell advertising space. And again, on-premise versus off-premise, allowing off-premise advertising, which currently you have on and off-premise in your definitions. I could go on and on about cannabis, liquor, all of the things that generate lots of advertising dollars. But I'll leave your imagination to let you know what type of advertising happens, especially when there's no restrictions about that owner. How many FTEs will it take to start mandating the permits monitoring? I mean, we have a number of questions. We are here in opposition to the ordinance amending the Sign Code. I apologize for the last-minute calls and meetings prior to the release of the most current Sign Code. Again, we are just now being able to have a policy discussion at the table through this process in last week with Patrick. I would ask you this: Do your businesses know about the new change? Do your residents know about the new change? We still can't figure out who is pushing this. I compliment the staff of making the changes and the updates, but addressing the Supreme Court ruling and where you're going now, this is a completely different direction that we haven't seen any other cities go down. This is a new road where you're opening the door for advertising on existing on-premise signs. We would ask that you either add in the on-premise/off-premise definition or at least postpone for six months and allow a stakeholder process, like Fort Collins that designated a website so their citizens, both business and residents, could have an opportunity through coffee shops, neighborhood meetings, town hall meetings, council meetings, be able to understand what was being proposed and also give recommendations and feedback. Lake would just announce theirs. Centennial, Littleton just adopted. All of these cities and counties are working hard to address the Supreme Court ruling while maintaining the character of the definition of on-premise and off-premise. And I think that's really the distinction here. You can address the issues of the ruling, but please, we're asking you to keep those definitions or delay and allow a process where we can come back to the table. CDOT, we sat for nine months with CDOT. They have in their own definition, and you have a lot of highways, on-premise, off-premise. It's in the state code. The Highway Transportation, the Beautification Act, transportation dollars are tied back to the funding through the state around highways and beautification. My clients, Lamar, Mile High, Outfront, they all do a tremendous job of also giving back. Yes, we're here trying to protect our interests. We are. We also don't want to be the ones trying to run down 38th, 32nd, trying to lock in every advertising space, right? So I think there were some changes made, so I acknowledge that. But at the end of the day, the code and what we were told is it's still open for advertising. I mentioned the other cities. I would ask for either the changes or a delay, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcus Daniel. And Steve Shen on deck.
My name is Marcus Daniel. Last name is spelled D-A-N-N-E-I-L. Hello, mayor, city council members, staff. Oh, I'm sorry. Business address is 9250 East Costilla Avenue. The Greenwood Village, actually. I have been in the outdoor advertising business for 20 years, and I wanted to come speak to you tonight just to give you some insight as to what we see happening with this potential Sign Code change. It pertains obviously to on-premise and off-premise signage. And just to back up a little bit, this is a very simple topic that somehow has become extremely complex and hard to understand. So I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. On-premise signage is basically a sign that displays information that pertains to the primary use of the property that it sits on or the business that operates there. Whereas an off-premise sign is information on goods or services available elsewhere, so advertising. The distinction has been around for as long as I've been in the industry, probably well before that. And it basically facilitates a city or a community to designate a landscape of signage, where certain things are allowed, where certain things aren't allowed, an overall feel for the community. Doing away with this distinction, we feel, is going to create somewhat of a signage chaos. When property owners get the idea of I can create some passive income on my currently what we would call on-premise sign, by selling that space to advertisers, it is going to become more and more and more attractive. It's not necessarily just the outdoor companies that would do this. And as this starts to happen, you have the potential of decent or indecent advertisers or messages. With no content control, this is what you're kind of putting yourself up against. Competitors, that's another big part of it, as R.D. mentioned. Competitors of very popular Wheat Ridge businesses could come in. Right now, they have the option of utilizing 16 billboards to try and target this community. This would open it up to every single sign within the community. As money is generated for these property owners, they may decide, hey, I want to put together an LED sign and sell some of this space while also being able to put my business up there as well. And this would start the whole proliferation process, and that's why we think this is a bad idea. Ultimately, distinctions of signs do not equal content control. A great example: A traffic sign can't be used to advertise. It's a traffic sign. That distinction exists. The other thing is that the industry, the public, business owners of Wheat Ridge, no one was really brought in to discuss or lend expertise in this process of changing the Sign Code. And I believe that especially industry experts that deal with this every day would have a seat at the table during this process to express concerns. We are a conforming use within the city. We run small businesses within the city of Wheat Ridge under this conforming use, yet had no input in this process. So in closing, again, we feel this is a bad idea and would like to table this at least for further study with input. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker signed up is Steve Shen.
Yes, good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Steve Shen. Last name is spelled S-H-I-N-N. My address is 4647 Leyden Avenue in Denver, Colorado. Not to take up too much of your time, but I do support the earlier comments of my colleagues. We do think this is a bad idea, a bad way to approach this. We're opposed to this ordinance. In my opinion, it's kind of a solution looking for a problem, and I think there will be problems with this. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I had signed up. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak at this time on this item? I don't see anyone, so we will now...
Mr. Mayor, I know council may have questions of staff, but if you'd permit me, I'd like to... And we spent quite some time with the industry, and they've made, you know, their argument. I feel strongly about that issue and want to give you my advice, which you may take, not take, take in part. That's always your choice. But if I might have a minute. Yes, we met with industry, and let me make a couple of points first. I'm pleased to see that they have said and admitted this is about competition for them. And that's fine, and they're in private business, and that's a perfectly acceptable reason to not want there to be competition in other signs besides their billboards. And they're very protective of their rights on billboards. The city's been in a couple of lawsuits over the 16 billboards that, you know, are permitted in the city. However, the second point I guess I would make is that let's remember that all businesses in the city already have a signed budget, and that's how I like to think about it. If you've got X amount of, you know, frontage on Wadsworth, this is the amount of sign that you can have based upon your... And that's always been true, and that's a very well-known system. Everyone's got that system. The system's being tweaked a little here, but it's really the same system. So it's not correct to say, you know, there's going to be a proliferation of signs if you don't make this distinction on, or if you cease making an on-premise/off-premise distinction. There will be... There will be the same number of signs as there are now. Signs are permitted to businesses now. They are now, they have been, and they will be in the future. What they're only saying, and they got to it, is, "Yes, but an individual business might want to advertise someone else," and that's a problem. That might be the problem looking for a solution, frankly, because it's a sign. It's a commercial sign. It's advertising whatever the property owner, that business owner, that local business owner wants to do. Good example is the Walgreens out at 32nd and Youngfield. You'll notice they identify their business, but frequently also identify a product that is for sale in that business. That's their choice and they're perfectly welcome to do that, and I'm not certain that you're in a position of wanting to change that. The fundamental legal question, which is what has been mentioned a couple of times, the one I want to finish with, which is that, in my view, having to read a sign so you know how to regulate it, oh, that's an off-premise sign because it means you're regulating on the basis of content. I get it that some jurisdictions have not chosen to deal with that, and I think we're still in early days, but the point I think that I would make is I think that is content-related. It's also frankly not true that you're out on your own if you do this. This is the eighth, that's my practice is exclusively representing cities and doing special counsel work for other cities. This is the eighth sign code I've worked on since 2015, and this is the approach taken. This is a really common approach to say, "You've got to own the property underneath the sign." And there's the fix that the staff has recommended, which I think is a good one, although you couldn't carve off a little piece anyhow to be a subdivision, wouldn't I, and we'd regulate it as a subdivision? But while I absolutely recognize that other jurisdictions have taken a different approach, it's not right, it's not fair, it's not true to say that, "Gee, Wheat Ridge, you're going to be out there all on your own, and this is a brand-new idea, and it's a bad idea." It's a well-understood idea. Many jurisdictions across the state and the country are doing it. It's not a bad idea. It's working for them. We haven't had any litigation in the cities that I've done these codes in. Not to say that there couldn't be there. Anybody can have litigation if they have the price of a filing fee. But the points I'm making here are to assist you in putting in perspective what you're hearing. You're not out there by yourself. It's a well-recognized technique to put to bed the issue of, "Gee, are we regulating on the basis of content?" The sort of competitive argument that's raised is more of a policy win for you, I guess, which is, "Gee, do you really want to allow your local businesses to sell signage to somebody else? That somebody else might compete with us, the billboard companies might compete with other people in Wheat Ridge." That's more of a policy call for you, but honestly, if you let people have signs and you're saying, "Have signs, and we don't care what you put on them," because that takes care of the First Amendment. You're not reading the content. Here's your signed budget, spend it wisely. If you want to waste it on something else, fine, do. If you want to make money on it, do. You know, that, I think, is a fair policy position for the city to be in, and it's really a hands-off position with respect to local businesses. I appreciate your giving me a couple of minutes. Happy to answer questions as the debate evolves.
Thank you. Okay, Council, we've heard the presentation from staff, we've heard from some public testimony, and we've heard from our attorney. I'll throw it over for questions. Mr. Rann.
Yes, I have a question from our city attorney. Do we know what the language is for what Jefferson County passed regarding signage?
No, I assume that what they're doing is retaining the prohibition on off-premise signs, and that's pretty easy language. I mean, it would be, you know, you'd have to have a definition and then prohibit that animal. So your definition would be something, because I've rewritten a whole bunch of sign codes and taken that out, so I can tell you that, you know, if you went there, it would be define an off-premise sign as a sign that contains material advertising or referring to a business or operation not located upon the same property where the sign is located. And now you have a definition, and you define that animal, and then elsewhere, under prohibited signs, and I think we've got that list, you know, you can't have signs advertising illegal activity, a couple of other things, that you'd add off-premise signs in the list of prohibited signs, and that would restore off-premise sign prohibition. It's pretty simple, easy to write.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, just as a real-world example here in Wheat Ridge, for about a year or better, we were at Cyclory Place signs at 38th and Wadsworth at the new development on the southwest corner there, and that would be an off-premise sign. Would that be allowed by what we're doing here if we don't get this on-premise, off-premise distinction?
Well, if there were a sign at that non-Wheat Ridge Cyclory location, and they arranged with the owner of that sign or the owner of the property that had the right to have that sign there high, we'd like to be able to advertise Wheat Ridge Cyclory down the street, and they came to an agreement, absolutely, they could do that. That's the, that's kind of the problem, I guess, that the industry has said needs to be solved, but in this, I mean, yes, you can, you know, it's what it, so long as the owner of the sign and the land said, allowed them to put that up there, sure.
Mr. Dahl, I could just elaborate.
I'll, if somebody else asks a question, I'm processing on this right now, I'm not getting very far very fast.
Ken has maybe some clarifications on that.
Mr. Johnson.
I mean, at the time, those were essentially illegal signs. They were illegal temporary signs. I'm not sure what we did from a code enforcement perspective. That particular property, Wheat Ridge Corners, now has approval through the Planning Commission of a master sign plan that includes certain monument signs and a certain package of eligible types of wall signs. So Mr. Dahl's certainly correct, but what they would need to do is they would need to work with that property owner to say, "We, you know, that property owner's going to build their monument sign package, and then they're going to allocate sign content as they see fit." I would imagine that there'll be plenty of demand from onsite tenants to take that signage, and there wouldn't be a lot of opportunity for an offsite tenant to obtain that signage with the owner's approval, but in the spirit of content neutrality, they could.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
So I had the opportunity to meet with some of the folks that spoke today, or actually some of their associates that spoke today, and I guess I understand where Mr. Dahl's coming from as far as, okay, this is the language, we're keeping the freedom of the speech open, but I also, I do have the language that Jefferson County made in response to see, so I have the exact language, and I'd like to go over that. And I guess, similar, we are in Jefferson County, so I think to match our county's, the information that they added to their sign documents, probably wouldn't, would be beneficial for us to at least look to mirror it. I know we don't have to, and I know I had also spoke to Patrick about it, and, you know, Jefferson County is definitely bigger than Wheat Ridge, and they have, you know, bigger issues than Wheat Ridge has to deal with. But I guess some of my concerns in not defining off-premise sign, because we did, we're removing that definition because we did have it, but by not defining it, I do worry about kind of, and we are seeing more electronic signs, like you see Apple Ridge Cafe has a nice little electronic sign, and, you know, and so that is still, it's not about renting just a little space of a sign. I mean, I could rent that every 30 seconds I sell that to Molly's Liquors or something like that. So I guess the other thing I want to avoid is some of our signs looking like Las Vegas, that, you know, we flash on other things. I have no problems with Walgreens, you know, saying Diet Coke, three pack, 12 packs for $4, because they actually sell that in there, but it's when we're starting to advertise other companies or businesses basically off-premise. So if the folks wouldn't mind, I'd like to kind of discuss or, you know, outline what Jefferson County decided. So they put off-premise signs back as a prohibited sign. They added definitions, "commercial sign," a sign containing a message advertising the manufacturer, sale, or availability of products, accommodation, services, attractions, or activities, or that intended to attract attention to a business or to products, property, accommodations, services, attractions, activities, or activities that are offered or exist for sale or for hire. Non-commercial signs, okay, next definition. Non-commercial signs, a sign containing a message that is not a commercial sign. And then off-premise sign, a commercial sign advertising a land use business, product, or service not located or available as the primary business or product or service upon the premise whereon the sign is located. So that's some of the language added. Now, I know it would, my understanding, Mr. Dahl, that is just tightening up our definitions a bit if we added those definitions, right?
Well, I think that does more than even they're asking for, believe it or not, because what they're asking for is the off-premise sign prohibition to be restored. The definitions you read actually make distinctions between commercial and non-commercial, which means you got to read the sign. Okay, what exactly is being advertised here? Is this a commercial message, or? So I guess the point I'm making is getting into the regulating signs as if they're commercial versus non-commercial really gets you into content. You have to kind of think about what the message is. While I, again, say I do not recommend it, and I actually advise you against it, to restore a sort of a simple off-premise sign prohibition, I'd take the, understanding I'm not recommending, but my job is to tell you how to do things, I'd take just the definition of off-premise signs that you read or some version, I mean, as you see, they're all pretty much the same, and prohibit them. You don't need to go as far as saying, making the distinction between commercial and non-commercial. That just gets you into reading more content and regulating on the basis of content that you don't need to do in order to prohibit off-premise signs.
So I think that's, I mean, basically, I just read what Jefferson County added. I do believe that, I would like to see that we add the off-premise sign back in. I mean, you may agree or disagree, and I know you've got cities who have probably done it both ways or one way, and I think that's, again, based off of your counsel and how you feel. So I would like to see at least that the off-premise sign definition be added back in, and I don't know if it's something Council wants to discuss more and we postpone this, but I just think for some clarification, it wouldn't hurt to discuss it a bit or open it up for discussion.
Sure. Obviously, it'll depend on the votes, et cetera, but, and maybe Ken might feel differently, but if that's the only thing that's being added or changed, it's a really narrow, simple fix, and I'm not sure it needs delaying the work that's been in progress for over a year, you know, all the study sessions we've gone through talking about sign spinners, and you delay, you'll probably go through some of that again. That's a pretty simple amendment if that's what you're doing.
Mr. Matthews.
I'm, this is slightly off-topic, but I'm reaching here a little bit, because we've opened and so broadened this definition of content. You know, an off-premise sign is just a sign that's not on the premises, and I'm not sure where content has a lot to do with it. But I'm a little curious, if people want to put up a sign showing naked people, would that now be legal?
Well, there's some...
It's content.
It's content. It might be a work of art, and there are some exceptions.
I'm understanding that, but I'm just trying to find out the breadth of this meaning of content. How far, how wide does it, what range of content does it really apply to? I mean, if there's, where does it end?
Well, the, what the Supreme Court is saying, and it was a unanimous decision, the Supreme Court, what they're saying is, "You've got plenty of tools, cities, to regulate signs, and you don't need to use the tool of reading the sign content to decide how it should be regulated." There's a long series of cases around obscenity, although naked people, you know, aren't necessarily obscene, that's a separate definition. So I guess I'd return to the, to what the Supreme Court's saying, and saying pretty clearly, "We think you have lots of other tools to regulate signs without having to resort to looking at the content, and you could regulate per content, but under the rules of the First Amendment, you have to have what they call a compelling state interest to regulate on the basis of content." And it has, regular city sign regulations don't reach that standard. For example, you can say, "Don't put up signs that say 'stop' on them in the wrong place." Now, you're regulating for content, but there's a compelling governmental interest in making sure that people don't, you know, that you haven't improperly signed an intersection. So all I'm telling you is that the concern about regulating based upon content is really a basic one that the Supreme Court, you know, has said we need to respect. And I've gone through all of these other cities' codes, and in the end, it's not so hard to scrub the content out and still accomplish exactly what you were doing before in terms of sign proliferation, in terms of sign clutter, et cetera. One of the few things that is a little harder to do is this off-premise prohibition that all cities have been prohibiting, off-premise signs. We've been doing that forever. Everybody's wanted to do it, and you can, you still can engage in that provision. I believe with the approach that has been suggested, it would be very difficult to do the kind of off-premise sign people used to, renting a little space from somebody and, you know, just plug a sign of your own on their land. Now, all of a sudden, you're using their signed budget in a city. And I'm probably not convincing you, but all I can do is tell you that I think it's important to respect what the court's saying. They said it unanimously, and there are cities out there working around the edges. We haven't seen the challenges, but the approach as suggested reaches, I think, accomplishes what the city in Wheat Ridge has been accomplishing for many years without the feared impacts that the industry is describing. Those impacts, I think, are as much in their minds to them and their competition, but even then, I don't know that it's going to take place. I'm rattling on, not adding much to value, I'm sorry.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to your point, Mr. Dahl, as it relates to the Supreme Court, my understanding is while there was a unanimous decision, there were several concurrences related to that decision, specifically Justice Alito's position was relating to this issue of on-premise and off-premise signs. So while there was a unanimous decision, there was at least in the, in the decision, an understanding of this complexity that we're also dealing with here as it relates to the distinction between on and off-premise signs, and he specifically called that out as something that should be understood as not delving into this, looking at the sign issue, is a point we're now dealing with.
Yes, he did, and what's interesting, Alito is, Justice Thomas wrote the opinion. The opinion was more broad, probably, as I think both Kagan and Sotomayor pointed out, than it needed to be to solve what was in front of the court, but nevertheless, it became the opinion. And Alito, as you say, ran through a list of things, "Well, I think you can still do this, 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 and this." Half of the list were things you could do, like traffic signage and stuff like that. Half of the things weren't things at all in the majority opinion, you couldn't draw them from the majority opinion, and Justice Kagan caught him on that, as, you know, in her concurring opinion, saying, "Well, he says that these are permitted," but of course they aren't. And, you know, they often are using their opinions to communicate with each other, and they were doing that, but in the end, you have concurring opinions, but the one you have to follow and the one that is the law of the court is the majority opinion.
But as it relates to the specific decision, that issue of on and off-premise signs wasn't at the heart of the ma- at the heart of the matter, this wasn't-
No, no.
It is being added on in some respects.
Yeah, the, you know, Pastor Reed and his church had these temporary signs that got put out on right of way, and they kind of moved their services around, they didn't have their actual home for the church. So the classic off-sign, on-premise, off-premise sign prohibition, based upon what the sign said, was not the fact pattern being litigated. Nevertheless, and it may well be that Justice Thomas's opinion was unfortunately broad, but the reaction that the local government community has taken is to follow it, because you follow until you're told something different.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions of staff? Ms. Duran?
I just have a comment that I would support adding the language that Jefferson County has added in there for off-premise, without having to delay, you know, another meeting or discussion. So I would support that.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
So this is on a different topic. When we discussed this matter at study session, we had discussed pole signs and versus monument signs, and we had kind of come to an agreement, and I don't see it reflected in here. And I think Ms. Davis actually brought up fast food chains and the pole signs that they use specifically. I think that we had said that we didn't really want to regulate as to whether pole signs were going to be prohibited. I just want some clarification on that.
So I'm searching here really quick. My recollection was that there was consensus to allow pole signs for existing businesses if they were replacing a sign, but for new development or total redevelopment of a site, then we required a monument sign. But let me-
So are we going to allow for variances in that matter? Like, if it doesn't make sense for Pep Boys, or McDonald's, or Burger King to have a monument sign because you can't really see it?
Yeah, so the sign code is eligible for variances, or the variance section of the code lists the sign code as one of those sections eligible to be considered for variance.
So if they're replacing a pole sign with another pole sign, is that not considered a redevelopment?
No.
Okay.
No, so total redevelopment would be, you know, the corner of 30th and Wattsworth. They totally tore down that medved and are building something new, they need to put in monument signs. If, for example, the medved building was still usable, and they just, someone just rehabilitated that and worked out of there, then that would not be considered total redevelopment, and they could put up a pole sign.
Mr. Matthews, would it be permissible to allow the sign companies to have a short rebuttal? Usually, it's not a debate. If there's questions that we have for them, we could certainly have them back. Is there further discussion, or questions that we want to have for, before I close the public hearing? Is there any more questions of staff, or the process that we want to entertain at this time? Mr. Urban?
I'd like to ask those representatives of the Colorado Outdoor Association as to whether or not the amendment offered by Councilmember Davis would be appropriate, or whether that would solve their issues and other concerns they might have.
Would Mr. Sewell like to step forward and comment on that?
Mayor and council members, thank you very much. With the off-premise sign amendment, we would thank you for that, if you move forward. I think I'd like to clarify that. The Supreme Court ruling, again, I think the reason why Jefferson County felt comfortable adding those three definitions is because the Supreme Court ruling was about a church and not a business, not categorized under commercial property. So that's why I believe, and you'd have to double-check, that Jefferson County felt comfortable by not stepping over the line and being vulnerable on the Supreme Court ruling. So we would, we would, we would hope that you would define it. Our issue still is this. The staff told us in the meeting, this would be a gold rush for you too, quote, "We don't want to go and try to have advertising on those smaller frontage roads in certain business districts or neighborhoods." That's, they said, "It would be open to us. That's not what we want to do. That's not what business we want to get into." Again, if the off-premise definition distinguishes that you cannot sell advertising, and I want to make this, this is one crucial piece, we're not talking about a Wheat Ridge business advertising for another Wheat Ridge business. Like Adams County, who approved the Unser Racing signs at 36 and I-25, who are on-premise signs, they ended up trying to advertise on the corner there, and next thing you know, for a month, they had sold the space, and it said, "Come and shop at Cherry Creek Mall." It then got the attention of Adams County. Our issue is still this. We don't want to get into that line of business of going and try to lock in small advertising 10 by 10-foot spaces, or get a slot for digital of a 30-second, five times an hour. That's not what we want to do. And so we're opposed to opening the gate for selling advertisement other than the primary use. So if this, in your definition, and I don't have our attorney here, and I'm not going to try to pretend to be one mayor, so, you know, we would, we agreed to these items as a package because we felt that a church at the time, the Supreme Court ruling, was not a commercial property, if that makes sense. So we like that. We'd asked the city attorney, does that solve our issue of advertising up and down 38th or 32nd of a property owner, not an advertising or leasing, but the property owner being able to sell advertisement to another business outside Wheat Ridge, or inside? That's our question, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Additional questions, discussions from council, of staff, or the speakers we've had? Is a motion in order?
Mr. Mayor, if I could have a clarifying question?
Yes.
So we've had a couple examples of what might constitute off-site signage. We've had the example of Wheat Ridge Cyclopes potentially taking a panel at the Wheat Ridge Corners Project. Presumably, that option would not be legal if this amendment were to pass by city council. My question would be, the other example that the city attorney earlier mentioned was the Walgreens, and has been noted by several people today, they're, those are not at all uncommon. Is it council's intent, if this prohibition of off-premise signage is passed, would be to enforce on those panels that Walgreens cannot, in fact, advertise for products that are sold in their stores? Or would it be simply that they couldn't advertise for some other tenant that's located in some remote location? And there's some, there's probably some gray areas that I'm not thinking about in between on that, but just want to understand from an enforcement perspective what the intent of this is.
Do we have Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I think based off of the definition, it did say that if it's products available at that location, they can advertise. It's just that they can't say, you know, go to, what's the liquor store in Lakeside?
Molly's.
Molly's, yeah, see, I just go to Applejack. So it can't say, go to Molly's to get your, you know, Blue Moon or something. So, I mean, if it's, if it's saying, you know, Diet Coke, you know, for, you know, four 12-packs for $3 or something, that if you look at the off-premise definition, I gave it to Mr. Fitzgerald to add to his, his motion, but it does say for products sold at, on that site, or that are specific to the site.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Mr. Doll?
To help you with the motion, what you probably want to do, Mr. Fitzgerald, is you've got the updated recommended motion that was handed out. We don't want to lose sight of number two, right, which was a fix that the industry has not raised, and I assume they don't object to us dealing with the definition of size of sign and doing that that.
The condition as proposed-
Would replace number one, right, or?
No.
No.
I tell you what, do we have any more questions of staff before I close the public hearing and we work on the motion? Ms. Duran?
Thank you. So if I can ask our city attorney, will, what we're wanting to add regarding off-premise language, will that take care of the concern that?
I think so.
Sorry. That they're having?
Yes, if you define an off-premise sign, and then you say it's prohibited, you've addressed their concern. The point just raised was, gee, in the Supreme Court case, it was a church, so that's how come it's okay for you to have a definition of commercial sign? Respectfully, I agree, or disagree, excuse me. Yeah, it's a church, but that decision is a whole lot broader than signs around churches. Read every opinion in that, in that case, and it isn't, oh, church signs, church sign, no, huh. It's the whole scheme. But having said that, you don't need to be defining commercial versus non-commercial sign to be able to do what they want, which is to preclude or make prohibited off-premise signs, because you just look in the definition of product or service, I think that you have, that's, you know, that's going to address the competition with them, that they are worried about happening on streets and roads in the city, and, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Pond?
Does the addition of this definition cause any other problems in the rest of the code, whether it be for small or large yard signs, or any of the other sign categorize, categories? I mean, if we're including this, does it, with the prohibition, does it, does it, does it affect intentionally or not intentionally the other, the other signs?
You know, it's always difficult when, you know, we're doing amendments at the meeting. You know, I think it's important to recognize, and council's direction was to have a limited number of temporary signs for residential lots. In other words, kind of typical small temporary signs that would be used for political advertising. So I'm not sure, without looking at, you know, it's a many-page ordinance, how we would view that, but it's a good question, I think, because it's not our intent to regulate the content of those types of signs.
And honestly, it may well be. It's a new sign code, and I'm not saying this is a reason not to be concerned, but anytime you do a major revision, six months later, you find one or two things that need to be harmonized, and probably wouldn't be the end of the world to, if for some reason, there's some wild interpretation that, that people, because of the off-premise sign prohibition, that it was restored, that somehow people couldn't, couldn't put up a political sign. Guarantee we're not going to be regulating on the basis of reading a political sign and deciding. I assume everyone will agree that, you know, Reed versus Gilbert, even though it wasn't a political sign in that case, that that case applies to political signs. So I think you'll have your chance. This is still fairly narrow, I would think, and you probably have, there would be an opportunity to do a little minor fix if necessary.
Mr. Manáez?
Yeah, I might add, maybe through Jerry to council, to add, in addition, if you're thinking of adding the off-premise signage definition, also adding it to the permanent signs by land use table, and then having it not permitted in all of the land use types. That would definitely make sure that we're not impacting yard signs, or any of the other temporary sign categories, at a minimum.
Okay, are we ready?
Is there any, any, before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, do we have any other discussion or questions of council, or the other, other parties, the industry that has come to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing, and now we are ready for a motion. Mr. Fitzgerald, can you fashion a motion?
All righty. I move to approve Council Bill Number 08-2018, an ordinance amending Article VII of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Sign Regulations, case number Z0A-18-01, on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication with the following three conditions. One, strike and insert in Section 4 of the ordinance and Section 26-705. E of the code, the property owner principally leasing or authorized agent of the platted or otherwise recognized as legally developed parcel. So that's an insertion. Number two, add the following language to the definition of size of sign in Section 26-702 definitions. For a freestanding sign, the sign area shall include the frame, if any, but shall not include the pole or other structure supporting, support, unless such pole or structural support is internally illuminated or otherwise so designate, designate, designed to constitute a display or part of the display device. Architectural features that are either part of the building or part of a freestanding structure, and not an integral part of the sign, and which may consist of landscaping, building, or structural forms completing the site in general, shall also not be in the sign area. And number three, as a definition, add where applicable in the code, a definition of off-premise sign as follows. A commercial sign advertising a land use business, product or service not located or available as the primary business, product, or service upon the present, premise whereupon the sign is located.
Do I hear of a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Urban. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgerald, and a second by Mr. Urban. We'll have discussion amongst council about the motion.
Can I ask for a sort of a technical change to that, or addition?
Okay.
If the maker of the motion wouldn't mind adding, and such additional conforming changes as necessary to implement the addition of the off-premise sign prohibition. And that's just a long way of saying where we've got a table that lists sign types, and we need to show that they're not permitted, we'd put the sign type in there.
I, that's why I added where appropriate. I thought that covered that. Does that cover that?
I think council's intent is clear, so I hate to belabor it, but I think, I agree with Doll's request. So if council's so inclined, I would certainly support that. But in terms of Mr. Fitzgerald's motion, I believe what it said was to add the third condition defining off-premise sign, and that was clear. I'm not sure your language include the additional direction and, the next step, which is, and then prohibit them in all locations. So I think that is kind of an addendum to that. Define it, and then prohibit them.
Where are you talking about?
This definition.
Yeah, that's what I read. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And prohibit the same.
And, okay. And to condition number three, add the words, and prohibit the same.
Good.
Okay, we have a, there was a second. It looks like we've done a slight revision in that. Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Mr. Pond?
I'll make just a couple of general comments, and maybe one or two specific. Thank you for all the hard work. We've, we've talked about more or less one thing tonight, but I know that we've had several times to talk about this and go through it, and I know it's a lot of work, so thank you for that. I just want to, my reaction to some of the things that have come up tonight are perhaps just to at least express what I think our intent was, or at least my intent, and my remembrance of the, of the conversations that we've had. It was not to create necessarily a whole kind of offshoot of advertisement as part of our sign code. I think it really was to try to work through the gymnastics of trying to change the code to be content neutral. So, you know, I, to that extent, I think I will acknowledge that we're not, we're not exactly listening to the advice of council, and I under-
not exactly listening to the advice of counsel, and I understand why. I won't, I, again, I don't know that, that the intent was there, and I'm not sure it would have happened anyway, but if this small amendment tonight helps that, that's, that's fine, although I, I do see how it's contradictory to the, to the, the rigor of our argument up to this point in terms of how we were trying to clean up the, the code.
Thank you. Additional discussion?
I just had a question. Councilmember Fitzgerald, when you read the motion in the first condition, the capitalized phrase, you said "developed parcel," and my copy says "developable."
Developable.
Developable. And then I also wanted to remind you to, it is your responsibility to get me a copy of, of that third condition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Oh, no. I hit the wrong button. Vote again, please.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, gosh. It's been a long hour and a half. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
I hit clear and stuff.
Thank you, staff, for your work on this. Thank you for industry and, and for coming in to help us out with this. We will move to item number three. Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce item number three for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three, whoops, just jumped on me. Council Bill Number 09-218, an ordinance approving a zone change from Agriculture One, A1, to Planned Residential Development, PRD, with an outlined development plan, OPDP, for property located at 5372 and 5392 Quail Street, case number WZ-17-11/Clark. At issue, and this is an ordinance on second reading, at issue, the applicant has requested approval of a zone change from Agricultural One, A1, to Planned Residential Development for property located at 5372 and 5392 Quail Street for the purpose of developing single-family homes and townhomes. The proposed rezoning area includes two parcels, the total size of which is approximately five and one quarter acres.
Thank you. This is an ordinance. Madam Clerk, do you have an ordinance number for us?
This will be ordinance number 1642.
Did you say 1642?
1642.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. If you intend to give testimony or speak on this matter, would you please rise and be sworn in? Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth as you understand it in this matter? Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report, staff report on this? Mr. Menendez, are you our staff report on this one? Thank you.
All righty. Again, for the record, Zach Wells-Mendez, planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, I will be presenting case number WZ-1711, request, request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural One to Planned Residential Development, just over five acres of land located near 54th and Quail. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. Property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore City Council does have jurisdiction to hear the case. I'll start quickly with 2016 aerial of the property. The, the black line that goes along Quail Street here and then comes back down on the other side of the property, this is actually the city boundary line, so the, the property is located in a peninsula of the city. It's surrounded on three sides by the city of Arvada, to the west, north, and east, and then to the south are some agricultural properties in the city of Wheat Ridge, and then the, this is down here, the aerial hasn't caught up yet, but the Quail Ridge Estates Development, which has been entitled for 25 single-family homes, which are under construction, and several of the homes actually have certificate, certificates of occupancy already. This is the same 2016 aerial, but with a zoning layer on, not a lot of colors, as we typically see, because most of this area is Arvada, but this property is zone Agriculture One, as are the properties to the south. This darker green that you see down here, and then over here is Planned Residential Development, so again, this is the Quail Ridge Estates, and then this is the portion of the Skyline Estates neighborhood that's in the city of Wheat Ridge. Oh, and there's a, I forgot about this small smidge of purple down here, the Planned Industrial Development. That's actually the Arvada Fire District Station. So quickly, the zoning on the property, A1, is a zone district that allows for agricultural or agriculturally related uses, as well as single-family homes on a minimum of one acre of land. The proposed zoning, Planned Residential Development, would allow for single-family attached and detached homes, so townhomes and single-family detached homes. The attached units are proposed to be centrally located on the property and traversed with open space, and the detached homes are proposed to be located along the northern and eastern property lines adjacent to those existing single-family homes here to the east and to the north. I'll quickly run through the, the ODP document, the outlined development plan document, which is the document that will establish that Planned Residential Development zoning. I understand this is not readable, it's just kind of to, to go over the document quickly. This is the first page, establishes the location, owner's signatures, city certification blocks if this is approved, as well as a character statement, and then this also defines the allowed uses right here on, on the property. They, the proposed uses are single-family homes and dupla, or townhomes, as well as household pets and home occupations, so very much in line with all of our residential zone districts. What they have proposed to prohibit in this Planned Residential Development is outside storage, I believe in RV storage, I'm sorry, RV storage is what I meant to say, which is more in line, or very much in line with our more recent Planned Residential Developments. The second play, page establishes circulation concepts, proposed right-of-way, which is this gray area all around, as well as the proposed development pattern. So again, on the, the exterior in this red box are where single-family homes only are allowed, and then in the second red box are where townhomes only are allowed. So the, the, this, this document very clearly states that these are two separate areas. There cannot not be townhomes up in this area or single-family homes up in this area. It was very much intentional to buffer this existing single-family homes in the neighborhood with single-family homes while allowing for a little bit more of our variety of housing types. So the process for the zone change, a neighborhood meeting is required and was held in early December. There were approximately 22 neighbors in attendance. Concerns were raised regarding the placement of townhomes along 54th Avenue, so that's why I mentioned that. Those have since been moved south of 54th Avenue away from the single-family homes, per the neighborhood's request. Traffic impacts to Ridge Road, as well as other general questions regarding architectural style, drainage in the area, and potential price points. During the public posting and notification period for planning commission, staff received one call inquiring about property lines and, and the process timeline for approvals and, you know, through to essentially construction if approved. And then during the public posting and notification period for the City Council public hearing, staff received one letter of support, which I believe needs to be distributed to council. Yeah, and Janelle has that for you all. We worked with referral agencies quite a bit through this process due to the neighboring jurisdictions and, you know, boundary lines and things like that, and there were no major concerns presented. Comfortable with what was being presented, and, and it can be served, you know, in the following process, which are here. The subdivision plat, which would establish easements for those utilities and rights-of-way, subdivision improvement agreement, and a specific development plan review. So if this outlined development plan is approved, these are the next steps in the process. The subdivision plat would be planning commission and city council review and approval. Subdivision improvements or improvement agreements specify a timeline of public improvements related to certificates of occupancy and building permits. Those are done internally. And then the specific development plan review would be a planning commission only review and approval, and it would need to be in conformance with this outlined development plan, you know, if it were approved tonight. So as the commissioners are aware, one of the criteria for a zone change is consistency with the comprehensive plan. The subject property is noted by an arrow in the image, which is yellow, designated as a neighborhood. The goals of the neighborhood designation include maintaining and enhancing the quality and character of Wheat Ridge's established neighborhoods, increasing housing options, and increasing investment and stability. Staff finds that the proposed development is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the goals for this neighborhood designation. I also want to quickly go over neighborhood context, which is a little bit different than what we usually do, but just important to go over due to the changes in the area. The subject property is located here in red. It is located approximately equal distance between the Wheat Ridge Ward G Line Station and the Arvada Ridge G Line Station. Much of the single-family development that you see noted was built or entitled prior to the knowledge that there was going to be commuter rail line in the area, and since the commuter line has become more of a reality, the housing proposals and entitlements in this area have changed. There's been a lot more townhouse development proposals near the Wheat Ridge Ward Station, apartment proposals in development near the Arvada Ridge Station. And, you know, for those reasons, the housing stock is diversifying with this pending commuter rail station kind of catalyzing new development in the area. So staff supports the mix of single-family homes and townhouse development within this, within the subject site, you know, as the housing stock in the area continues to diversify and we promote, you know, a kind of a diversity of, of housing options and housing stock. So with that, staff recommends approval of the zone change for the following reasons. It promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the community. It is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. It does include a circulation network that supports the city's goals related to bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, and it establishes enhanced sign controls related to site design and architectural that will result in high-quality development. Staff would recommend three conditions of approval, the first being that the specific development plan and subdivision plat shall not be reviewed at public hearing until Quail Street has been dedicated as right-of-way. The reason that we have suggested this is because Quail Street mostly lies within the city of Arvada, so we want to make sure that there is right-of-way that is dedicated and approved plans to build the street through the city of Arvada. We've been working with them very closely on how exactly we go about doing this, if the project moves toward. So the city of Arvada and the city of Wheat Ridge are very much coordinated on this. The developer has been in contact with both cities, so we're, we're all working very well together, and we just want to make sure that Quail Street has been dedicated prior to us entitling a specific development plan and subdivision. Additionally, specific, or if final utility or drainage design impacts off property, off-site property owners, written authorization shall be provided prior to public hearings. So this condition is, is prompted by the need to cut through the, the backyard essentially of one of the neighboring Skyline Estates neighborhoods. There is a drain, a courage drainage easement that goes through all of their backyards, and so based on my understanding of the drainage, and I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I apologize, there, I believe needs to be a manhole place in one of those backyards, so we're going to need written authorization from that property owner and from the city of Arvada that they are okay with, with all of this. And finally, something that we noticed is that in the development plan, the, the rear yard setbacks are only 10 feet for the single-family houses, so we would propose that those be revised to 15 feet, and that the developer is aware of that change and is comfortable with that as well. So with that, I, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any zoning questions. The applicant is also present and willing to make a presentation if the council so desires.
Why don't we hold off on questions of staff until we hear from the applicant? Would the applicant like to come and, and come to the podium and sign in? Give us your name and address and tell us about your project.
Good evening. My name is Summer Clark. Though I currently reside in Glen, Montana, I'm registered to receive mail at my family's estate at 5392 Quail Street in Wheat Ridge, where I have lived through my most formative years. Though traveling and living in other states and countries over the more recent years, I have always returned to the farm and my family that lived there, and the roots it has held for myself and my family over decades past. So I'm giving you a slight presentation with this to give you a little background. To summarize, a much longer history of more than 50 years over my family's estate that we fondly call the farm, where my family has lived and grown up, along with a variety of farm animals, poultry, goats, and horses, I would first mention that the house, the original house, garage, and barn, were built on the farm in the early 1920s, made primarily of river rock and cement. My father was a builder by trade, so he remodeled the house and has since built other structures, most of which today are more than 40 years old. Our neighbor bordering to the south of us also included in this rezoning application has older structures for farm animals and whose home was built in the early 1950s. Our land was surrounded by more than 100 acres of open space, some preserved by a 100-year pledge barring development where farmers gleaned alfalfa, and in more recent years where the wild horse rescue was allowed use for their horses to roam, and some land was utilized by the late Colorado State Ridge Home, and beyond that, more vast acreage of undeveloped land that was filled with deer, fox, and other beautiful wildlife, that were driven away first by the Rainbow Ridge Development in the early 1980s, on this picture, followed later by the Skyline Estates Development in early 2000. These beautiful creatures are rarely seen anymore near the farm on the hill, having been driven away from there by those developments. When my family was approached by Melody Homes with their proposal to build Skyline Estates in the late 1990s, my family worked with Melody Homes and did not object the development, even giving them an easement vacation they needed. We realized that more people beyond just us should be given the right to live and enjoy the beauty of the ridge, and the enjoyment of having a home located close enough to the mountains while also having a short commute to Denver. We looked at the developing community as a whole and not at our personal desire to keep it as it was for ourselves. The Skyline Estates Development broke apart our enjoyment of the ridge, the beauty of the wildlife that once lived there, and our views of the magnificent lights on the mountains to the west, Arvada's community on the hills to the north, and the valley below. All these views are now the views our neighbors that live along 54th Avenue enjoy. We have realized that there comes a time when the farm lifestyle in suburbia becomes obsolescent, then is when governmental bodies help in the promoting of health, safety, and welfare of their citizens, when the keeping of farm animals attracts rodents and dangerous wildlife like rats and coyotes. Then the peaceful suburban life surrounding the older farm lifestyle is more challenged by the potential health risks that rats bring and the danger to dog and cat pets that coyotes bring. This realization, along with the many complaints my family was bombarded with, whether it was for an escaped goat or the roosters crowing in the morning, brought us to seriously consider what we never had before, to let our farm life go and consider what would be better for the community that we allowed to grow around us, while looking toward creating a new and better horizon for the land we loved and grew up on. We found a solution that would do all of this for the betterment of our neighborhood in its health, safety, and welfare by creating a development to replace a dead-end peninsula area of Wheat Ridge with a fluent new housing plan aligned with the Wheat Ridge Ward Station vision and Wheat Ridge Master Plan, keeping in step with the city's 2035 vision, while also addressing the need for high-quality and affordable housing along the G Line, near playgrounds, parks, and the Van Bibber Trails, with neighborhood harmony in mind, and with thoughtful design and aesthetics which with thoughtful design and aesthetics which is in stark contrast to the land's current use and zoning. For health, the development will enhance the neighborhood, cleaning up close to 100 years of farm and other debris, its aesthetics, and the health concerns it raises for the area. Watershed from along the ridge flowing into a drainage easement engineered jointly for our Skyline Estates neighbors and our properties should be significantly decreased with the Quail Run improvements, swells, and planned detention pond, as well as transferring to our easterly neighbors less debris to clean up in their backyards after strong rainfall. Safety, the development will bring in necessary fire hydrants while eliminating dying trees and underbrush that may be hazardous for fire while enhancing and beautifying the area with carefully planned and cared-for green spaces. Welfare, the development will open the area with fresh, new, and beautifully designed housing that will aesthetically enhance and exponentially add value to the neighborhoods both present and future that surround it, while also helping a great need and demand for housing in this area. We have chosen to work with Wonderland Homes to develop Quail Run because we have seen the planning and design of their projects principally directed at the functional aesthetic use and preservation of the land they have developed, always creating functional open spaces for their communities to enjoy. We hold strongly to the same values they do, which we believe will be a beautiful enhancement to the community and a new legacy for our properties. And we want to thank again the Wheat Ridge Planning Staff, who have given us an immense amount of patience while working with us over the past year and a half through so many site plan amendments and changes to help us balance Wheat Ridge standards and policies with our goals for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have two, I would like to open this up for public testimony, and I have two people signed up to speak. Dennis Pettier. Mr. Pettier has decided not to make a comment. Rosie Anne, pardon me. Mary Ann Rodriguez.
Do I need a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium. Please give us your name and your address.
Mary Ann Rodriguez, 11171 West 54th Avenue, Arvada.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Well, I appreciate the rearrangement of where the townhomes are placed. I just have several concerns, one being traffic. I know there's been traffic studies done, but I don't think they're realistic because I don't know if any of you have actually come up to where all this development is going on. Do you all live in Wheat Ridge?
Mm-hmm.
I used to live in Wheat Ridge, and I love Wheat Ridge. And I moved because I got married, but otherwise I'd still be in Wheat Ridge. But I like it because of the land and the openness and the community, but I just feel like it's really crowded up there, so I'd really encourage you all to come up there and see what's going on. I think just not looking at a map gives you a good idea. My other concern is the townhomes. I don't know if they're going to be two or three stories. I'd recommend two stories, not three stories. All the houses around there are two stories, not three. So if there were to be townhomes, personally, I'd like to just see single-family homes because that's what all Skyline's estate is minus the two-story condos that aren't a part of us that go along Ridge Road. But they're two-story as well, so I'd recommend a two-story for that as well. But I just, like I said, I'm concerned traffic and, and community, so. And I think it would help preserve the beauty of what we have, so, you know, doesn't mean that just because there has to be development. I used to live downtown. I moved out this way because of the nature, and now it's all being taken away. And I know, I know it's all about money and everything, but I just wish there was a little bit compromise as far as keeping some kind of beauty and, and not so crowded. That's why I came out here, so that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Those are the only people that I had signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone else in our, in the city council chambers tonight who would like to speak on this issue? All right. I'm going to move now to questions from council of staff or the applicant. Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 09-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 5372 and 5392 Quail Street from Agricultural One to Planned Residential Development on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. Number one, city council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 of the Code of Laws. The requested rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. Number three, the requested rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-112.E of the Code of Laws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Matthews, a second by Ms. Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please poll the council.
Motion, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number four, Ms. Duran, would you introduce item number four, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Resolution Number 25-2018, a resolution establishing a street width for 29th Avenue from Kendall Street to Fenton Street, for Fenton Street from 29th Avenue to 30th Avenue, and for 30th Avenue from Harland Street to Fenton Street. Would you like me to read the issue, or do we have a staff report?
I believe we can check it with a staff report. Mr. Westberg, are you going to provide our staff report tonight?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Mark Westberg, Public Works Department. We're here to, this is why we're here, because back in the day, 29th and Fenton used to look like this, and then it started to look like this, and then it became this. And now it looks, it's pretty like this because this is just a black and white. We don't have a recent aerial, but this is what 29th and Fenton now looks like. And we have the opportunity to straighten 29th Avenue where it used to jog around the Denver Water ponds and allows us to also remove that stoplight and to make some street improvements. As a part of the Denver Water project, they were required to do some things around their project, and since we were, we were also required to do some things on the south side of 29th, we decided to sort of co-op on this and work together on it. And we took over sort of the management of all the streetscape things that they're doing in the street improvements because it seemed like it would be a lot easier to have one group out there building on this thing than having several of us. Last April, one day, 364 days ago, because today's the 23rd, we came before you with the street width designation for those streets right around Denver Water Site, 30th Avenue from Harland to Fenton, Fenton Street from 30th down to 29th, and then 29th Avenue from Ingalls over to Fenton Street. And the street width was voted for at that time, but about two months later, Edgewater came to us, and they had a development on the south side of 29th Avenue between Kendall and Ingalls, that vacant parcel, that vacant land that's down there, and also wanted to do a water line extension from Kendall Street all the way over to Gray Street. They've got some stagnation issues with the water line that they've got on Kendall Street right now. And so they approached us with that, and so we slowed our project down a little bit to try to incorporate what they're doing, and we've now done that. But we've got to come back for street because we have this additional portion to do, and it's been over a year since we, since we were last before you, and you have to start construction within a year for the street width to be valid. So just as a reminder, street width is measured from the face of the curb or the flow line of the street or the edge of pavement. The existing and the proposed widths vary a lot through there, and so we're not really required by the, by the ordinance or by the code to talk about the existing width is we just talk about what we're proposing. There's a public hearing process is why we're here tonight, and then construction must commence within one year of that street width designation. We are going to do it this time. We've gotten all our bugs and kinks worked out with everyone, and we're following that process and procedure per the city charter. The budget for the entire project is just over $1.5 million. Denver Water's portion is going to be about $400,000, a little over $400,000. We actually approved an IGA with them last May that we've still got pending the final resolution of the cost estimates and stuff. Edgewater's portion is going to be about $300,000. That doesn't include their water line. They're going to include that in our bid package, but the water line work will all be there, so I don't have an estimate for that, so we've not included that in, in what we're doing. And we hope to come back to you on June 11th to approve the IGA with Edgewater because we're still finalizing some of those details. Tonight's meeting is just to get the street width designated. So our portion's going to be a little over $800,000, and that does, that does now get us 29th Avenue from just east of Fenton all the way to Kendall Street, which is a pretty good stretch. We're going to have curb gutter and sidewalk on that whole portion where we just don't have anything right now. And so this, I just wanted to show a graphic. It gets a little psychotic on who's building what and who's responsible for it. We're going to build all of it. We're designing all of it. But Denver Water is financially responsible for that blue portion right around their site. We're going to do all the yellow stuff, and there's a little slim line on Fenton Street because we're widening Fenton Street by two feet. It doesn't meet our current street width by two feet, and if you've ever driven Fenton Street during the day when all the folks are parked on both sides of the street, it's a little bit narrow. So we're widening that by two feet. And then we're, like we said, we're straightening 29th Avenue, and then we're going to be responsible for the north half of 29th, that western portion heading out towards Kendall. And then Edgewater's going to be responsible for their portion that's adjacent to their So these are just some graphics that we've done, and we show, this is the street width for this western portion, which is 38 feet. There are some places that you'll see, we've got some bump outs and things for the pedestrian and to make sure we keep sight distance triangles okay at the major streets and stuff. And then this portion here on the property right east of J Street, we're going to remove the on-street parking there. There's a pretty good slope there, and if we don't remove that, we end up having to build like a four-foot wall, and we wipe out a bunch of landscaping that that property owner just did last summer because she didn't know our project was coming. And of course, we didn't know this part of the project was coming then either. So we're working with that property owner to, we're not going to do the on-street parking there. She doesn't need it. She's got a large frontage on J Street. It allows us to reduce our wall height to about a foot, and we don't have to wipe out all of her landscaping that she's got. So we, we have a cost savings and so does she. And then for this eastern portion, the part east of Ingalls is, the street width on that part is 26 feet because most of it is that way. We have a few pockets of, of on-street parking, but most of the street is just 26 feet wide. And then for the portion along Denver Water, we add on-street parking for most of that length, and so our street width there is 32 feet wide. So we have three different street widths on 29th Avenue. Fenton Street is being widened by the two feet, as I mentioned, to 38 feet, and so we've got that street width on there. And then for some reason, 30th Avenue was built really, really wide back in the day, and so we're actually shrinking that street to get our standard width of 38 feet there. And part of the reason for doing that was it allowed Denver Water a little more room to add some more landscape buffer on that side because, you know, most of the project, if you've been out there, it looks great. From the south and the east, it looks pretty good. From the north, you can still see the tops of those tanks and things, the new tanks. And so we want to allow a little more room for them to put that landscape buffer that they've got in there. And so that's why we actually shrink that piece of street. So our final design, we hope to have those pretty much 100% plans completed by the end of May. We'll go advertise for bids sometimes in June and then hopefully come back before you on July 23rd to award the construction contract. So you'll see me again on, on this project on June 11th for the Edgewater IGA, if we can get all the details worked out, and then on June 23rd for the construction contract. And then we're going to start construction no earlier than August 20th because the bike race, the Colorado Classic, is running down 29th Avenue on August 18th. We thought it would be a bad, bad thing to tear up the street prior to the bike race. So our, our construction start date will be sometime after August 18th. We're planning on August 20th, just the Monday right after that. And that's, that's really all I've got tonight.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shaver, can you, can you verify whether or not I opened the public hearing? Because I can't recall.
I didn't, I didn't write it down.
Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this? Or is there anyone here that would like to speak on this issue from the public?
No one has signed up.
Sir?
I have just a quick question.
Please, if, if you would like to, if you want to come, come to the podium, and we're happy to, happy to take your comments and if you'd give us your name and address.
My name is Ray McGee. I live at 2910 Ingalls Street, and I own the property at the corner of 29th and Ingalls. And my question is for Mark really. It's simple. I'm wondering if there's one bump out on my property or two.
There's one.
Can you speak into the microphone? The, the diagrams are a little confusing. I can't tell if there's one bump out or two. At one point, there were two bump outs on my property, one next to my driveway and one on the corner of 29th and Ingalls.
Thank you.
I'm hoping for one at the corner. I don't understand that one, but I'll.
Thank you. Mr. Westberg, are you able to answer that question?
So my recollection is we have one bump out there. I'll check tomorrow, and I'll, I've got a couple of folks that want some plans. We've been tweaking the plans, but I think we're at the point now we can send some things out to people, raise one of those guys. So I'll make sure we send some plans out tomorrow, and if there's any issues, we'll try to work with them to try to resolve those as we enter final design.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have questions of, from council of staff? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Just out of curiosity, how do we work our street widths when we're adjacent to another municipality like we are for portions of this project?
I had that same question. So my understanding from our legal counsel was that we treat the width as the entire width of the street, that we're going to be building from curb face to curb face. The ordinance or our code doesn't really talk about whether it's next to another jurisdiction or not. Now, if they decide to change the street width on their side of the street, independent of us, after we get it built and they came and did something different, then our street width orders doesn't kick in, but we would do it that way unless Mr. Dollop says something else.
Yep. That's right. The Charter 5.20, it's still a street within the city, even though only half of it is, you're still deciding where that's going to go, and so the process applies.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
I have a couple of questions. How lengthy do you think that this construction project would be?
You know, we think with our start date of August, we'll get, depending on the winter that we have, if it's like the last couple of winters, we'll get a lot done. We'll likely get the construction done, a lot of the construction done this fall and then, and then into early winter, November, December timeframe. If we have a bad January, February, we'll have to finish up. No doubt, we do have a lot of plantings to do around the Denver Water Site. We're doing all the street trees and stuff for them there. And so that work may have to be delayed until April or May of next year just to, just because of the weather. So that's what we're looking at from that standpoint, so.
So the Denver Water Project, as we know, has already been quite a lengthy project, and a lot of the businesses in that area are really struggling as we have all received correspondence about recently. So I just want to know what kind of efforts we're going to be taking to support those businesses through an even longer construction project.
So we're working with Edgewater. The only really, we've got some utility relocates to do, but those are all going to be just overhead relocation, just moving poles and things. There's not any undergrounding work on their part. There are some Comcast facilities and things in there. If you drive down 29th now, there's a little, there's a little berm on the north side next to the Denver Waters because there's the Comcast fiber optics in there. They didn't bury it deep enough, so they had to leave that berm behind and not to cut that. So there is some work that's going to be happening before the start of our project, but it's all going to be on the side of the street. During our project, we'll ensure that we keep one lane of traffic open pretty much at all times because we're not, again, we're not doing a lot of underground work like what Denver Water's doing. They have to close the street because they're just stuck in a position where their lines are in the middle of the street and they can't work around those. I think we'll be able to work around that and keep one lane of traffic open at all times. And then we'll use flaggers at the two ends to flag people through and that kind of thing.
Is there any way that we could increase signage in that area, Patrick? And either marketing for those businesses and our?
Yeah, we can, as we've done with the Denver Water Project, we, we have signs, I think, on both, both ends that construction, the businesses are open during construction, and I think they've always had access to the businesses, but, but we get it. Certain people avoid construction zones when there's construction, but yeah, we can, we can make sure that there's additional signage to make sure that people understand the businesses are open.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Duran.
Yes, I wanted to clarify that the Denver Water Project that's going on right now should be ending the end of this month, correct? And then the flow of the street should be back to normal?
My understanding is they're running a little bit ahead of schedule on the relining project they're doing, so I think they're hoping to finish that up in next, next week, and then they'll start doing the street repairs and things like that. But I think the street closure stops at the end of next week, but I'm not, I'm not completely up to speed on that, but that's what I thought I heard this morning in our staff meeting.
Okay, and there won't be any street closures with the new project that's coming up that's going to interfere with those businesses and the shopping center there?
Right, right. Yeah, and we're doing, everything we're doing is going to be west of Fenton, so we're not even getting close to Depew. So, you know, access from Sheridan and north and south on Depew and on Eaton and all those other streets will be wide open. The work we're doing on Fenton Street is just on the one side. We're going to have to tell the folks at the assisted living place, you can't park on the west side during construction, so they'll have to figure out what they're going to do with all their cars that they, they park on or right of way. You know, and we're really only, our project pretty much starts at the, at the driveway to the, to the liquor store, gas station on the north side of the street. We're pretty much going from there west, so we're not going to impact the folks to the east nearly as much as the the east nearly as much as the, these recent Denver Water projects have.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mr. Westburg, when we had the public meeting here, we, we discussed the features of, that you were going to build and there was some question about whether you were doing, uh, street lighting on that? Is that, you've confirmed that we're doing lighting on there?
Yeah, so what, based on the input we received at the neighborhood meeting we had a few weeks ago, we're going to add pedestrian lighting on the Denver Water side of, of 29th Avenue just along their frontage there because there's no residents that live right along that frontage where Denver Water is. And then at Gray Street, we're going to add a street light to help light that intersection. And then we'll put street lights in at Fenton Street just because we're removing the traffic signal, which has street lights associated with it. So we're going to make sure that Fenton and Gray Street are lit up adequately. And then we're going to run a string of ped lights on that north side. The folks on the south side of the street weren't very excited about getting ped lights on their side of the street, but they were very okay with having those ped lights on the north side. And those will be our standard LED lights that we've been using everywhere else. So it should, it'd make a very attractive walkway on that north side of, of the street. You know, up against the Denver Water site.
Okay, so that will, that will be the new style of, of pedestrian lights that, that go down the street. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you. Can you give an estimate of how wide the sidewalks will be in that area?
The sidewalks will all be five feet because it's a residential area. That's our standard for the, for the, our minimum for the, for the sidewalks. And, and we're, we're, we're up against the rideaway in a lot of places for that. So I'd love to put in six, but, but our minimum is five feet, so we're going to be putting five feet, five-foot sidewalks in.
Uh, Ms. Duran?
Thank you. Will that be a four-way stop there on 29th and Fenton when the light's removed?
It's just going to be a two-way stop. We looked at the traffic volumes and the, and the stuff and it doesn't warrant a four-way stop. We're still looking at the option of putting in a, one of those flashing beacon crossings a little west of Fenton Street to try to help with, because there's a parking community there that double parks right now. They won't be able to do that when we do our projects, so they're going to be sort of scattered up and down the street. So we're looking at trying to put one of those flashing beacons in. For a little while, those were not approved by the feds and now they are again. So we may add that back in the plan. We took it out for a while because you couldn't do them.
Yeah, I'd like to see that there.
Back in, and so we think that'd be a really good thing to have in the middle of that street.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Thank you.
We also feel like from a traffic calming standpoint, having the on-street parking up and down the street is going to help to calm the traffic and people won't be just flying down 29th Avenue.
Before I close the public hearing and ask for motion, is there any more questions that the council has of staff? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and a motion is in order.
I move to approve resolution number 25-2018, a resolution establishing a street width for 29th Avenue from Kendall Street to Fenton Street, from Fenton Street from 29th Avenue to 30th Avenue, and for 30th Avenue from Harland Street to Fenton Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. I would like, it's just about 13 after nine. I'd like to take a short, probably eight-minute recess right now.
from Fairmont, Arvada, Larkspur, and somewhere else. And the, I, I wish I would have seen the whole thing because it was about how they're looking at the possibility of having to close firehouses. Did, you're, you knew about that. And so I just like, I, I got to thinking about Clear Creek Crossing and there, there's this, like, huge development. And a, a lot of businesses are gonna make money. There's gonna be residential, the developer will make money from residential. There's a lot of new people coming in. I was like, that has an impact on the services that we provide, police, and, you know, West Metro too. But, I mean, that's not our jurisdiction. And then I was thinking about these, um, rezonings up here that you did tonight with more single-family houses and multifamily. And more's gonna come, and you've done some already. And, um, just this, this more and more and more, and the impact. And what about the impact on the services that we're able to provide? We have to provide police service for all those folks. And, and then the fire
By Mr. Urban, would you please introduce item, item number five?
departments have to too. And who's gonna pay for that? And I just, I just wish that
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Council Bill number eleven dash two thousand eighteen,
there was some kind of, sort of, thing upfront that the developers, it's like, maybe you could work on a, 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 some kind of formula. If you develop this much amount of land as commercial or residential, probably the planners have formulas like this. You're gonna need X amount of services and make them pay for it upfront. Um, I had some friends that moved years ago, moved down to Albuquerque. And it was when, if you're familiar with Albuquerque, there's this big development above Albuquerque called Rio Rancho. And it was, it was nothing. It was just vacant land. And they built basically a whole town up there. And they made that developer of that land give, just offer to any church that wanted it, five acres. Just, and, and, and so there were, you know, a number of churches that signed up and, and got it. And things like that that create community. But anyway, I just, I wanted to plant a bug for y'all to be thinking about some, you know, it's nice to have all this new development, but, yeah, then we gotta serve it. And somebody besides the existing taxpayers should have to do that. And then one other thing, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that y'all have been, um, talking about Wheat Ridge Poultry and those businesses down there. Because I saw that piece on the, on the news, and I was like, oh my gosh. And it had been, it's been a while since we shopped down there because I don't live near there. I told my husband, "You go over to Wheat Ridge Poultry tomorrow and buy something." And he almost couldn't get in there. But, um, he did, finally. And, um, but just, oh, folks out there, please go shop at those businesses down there. Because that's just really, that's too bad. It's a shame. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Duran?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Urban?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Davis?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, I have one thing. Um, the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team, also known as the AT-ATS, are having their first, uh, neighborly streets meeting. It's going to be held this Thursday, April twenty-sixth, from six forty-five PM to eight thirty PM at Pietra's off of Forty-fourth and Field. So I invite all of you to come and have a discussion about our neighborly streets and traffic calming. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Matthews?
Not tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing tonight, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.